There we go. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council for February 18th, 2014. Ask Councilor Rel to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Hemmend is unable to attend tonight. Councilor Hurley?
Here.
Councilor Kotkin?
Here.
Councilor Menusos?
Here.
Councilor Martino?
Here.
Councilor Rel?
Here.
Councilor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari?
Here. Thank you, Dolores. Our first item on the agenda for this evening is a hearing on the resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the agreement entitled "Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects with the Department, Connecticut Department of Transportation." Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak on that item? Anyone wishing to speak on that item? Seeing none, I'm going to declare that hearing closed, and then we'll move on to general comments. Any public comments on any topic of interest? Gus?
Does the Town Council ever wonder why the council meetings are not well-attended like tonight? I guess I'm the only one, and the reporter, besides these people right here. Is it just possible that the public does not attend these meetings because the council does not listen nor care enough to address the public concerns? For example, a few months ago, the gentleman on James Well Road with the water problem in the house, was anything ever done to address his concerns? Did anybody from the town go to his house and suggest possible solutions, problems? The guy's been there for 20 years, and all of a sudden he had water problems, and it seems that nobody cares. And I'm sure that he still pays his taxes. Personally, I have been complaining about certain conditions on Morrison Avenue for more than three years, and nothing has been done. I believe that the residents on Morrison Avenue have been treated like second-class citizens. As you all know, before the reconstruction of the sidewalk, the only place where there was no sidewalk was just on the north side of Morrison Avenue, east of Orchard. Do you ever wonder why there was no sidewalk on this location? It was because of safety concerns. It is not safe for the students attending middle school to cross Morrison Avenue at Tifton Road. Again, the intersection side distance from Tifton is only 232 feet, and this distance is good only for 24 miles per hour. The 31st, the 85th percentile goes 31 miles per hour. The students should cross Morrison Avenue at Orchard, where they can be seen from uncoming cars. What the town has done by constructing a sidewalk has created a dangerous intersection. The owner at the southwest intersection of Tifton has not gained anything by the reconstruction of the sidewalk. Matter of fact, the curb line in front of the house has moved closer to the house. A retaining wall has been constructed just back of the walk, and this location is the only place where the sidewalk is adjacent to the road, just the way it was before the reconstruction. I brought to the town attention that in other locations in town where the stop sign is located on the street only in one direction, there is a sign to let the driver know that uncoming traffic does not stop. But on Morrison Avenue, we don't have one. We just have a stop sign. You don't even know that there is no stop sign on the other side. The no-parking signs at the south side of the street are located at the back of the walk. As you know, the signs belong on the snow shelf, and I believe that Morrison Avenue is the only street in town where traffic signs are located at the back of the walk. When I asked town officials regarding this situation, the answer has been, the signs are located on town property, and the town has the right to do so. I understand that. Notice, though, that the sidewalk is on town property and belongs to the town, but the property owner shovels the snow and makes minor repairs as needed. And again, I asked on a previous occasion, how many times do I have to clean the sidewalk? Every time the snowplow goes by, I have to clean it again. I guess as many times as the snowplow goes by, that's how many times I have to clean the sidewalk. That's the answer. When I ask the residents to come to the council meeting, they always refuse. They say, "The council does not listen. They do whatever they want, and it seems that they do not care about the well-being of the residents." This is not a good reputation to have. Again, thank you for allowing me to express my concerns.
Thank you, Gus. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? We've got a light crowd tonight, I'm sure, because of the weather. Thank you. We're going to move on to council reports. Council reports. Any council reports?
I guess I can talk about the... We attended, I guess it's not a report, it's more of a, we attended the BOE budget meeting, the last meeting they had, and they're going to present their budget to their, the administration's going to present their budget to the Board of Ed officially on the 25th, which is, I believe, next Tuesday. And it looks like it'll probably be around 4.22 percent.
Say that again?
4.22.
Okay, thanks.
Now, that's, they can change it, but that's kind of where they settled at in the meeting.
Any other thoughts or comments? Mike, I wanted to thank you for attending those meetings. I know you've attended almost all of them. I know Jeff and Tony have attended some. I attended Saturday, so there's been, you know, obviously, good observation opportunity for us with what they're doing and how they've arrived at where they are at this point. Obviously, there's going to be quite a bit more discussion, and I'm sure several generations of refinement on their budget, but I appreciate the time you've taken to be there, to hear some of the information, Mike. Other council reports?
I suppose I can report on the building committee. I know we do have representatives from the building committee, Christine and ONG as well, and Rusty is here as well, so I'm sure they're going to report to us later on an agenda item. But obviously, I think most of us know, but they've worked hard on the value engineering. I think another million dollars in value engineering. I think it's up to over $2 million right now at that point. But obviously, on the agenda tonight is, we're going to be asked to look at the awarding some of the significant number of the contracts at this point. And I think, obviously, this is going to be explained to us, but it's, in my opinion, critically important that we keep this project moving, and this is the way we can ensure that happens. It also ensures that we lock into these contract prices, and if we obviously don't move forward with this, we are in a very different position. So, and I think the prices will certainly be higher, so. But I think we're going to get some explanation later, and we'll have comments, and I'm sure there'll be questions. But I did want to report, that was a unanimous recommendation from the building committee, and I do think they are, you know, working hard to make this project move forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate that. Council reports, any other? Any council or comment? Jerry?
Yeah, once again, I just want to compliment the town crew, who seems like they're out there day and night, and have been out there day and night for about a week or two with the snow removal. I know it's getting pretty impossible to find a place to put the snow, but the streets look good overall, and I just want to thank them for their dedication and hard work.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments, council comment? We'll move on to town manager's report.
On the podium this evening are a couple documents. One that says Town Council agenda item. This was supposed to be in the packet. It's a synopsis of what you're being asked to vote on for the BOE, or the building committee action tonight. So, it's got a table in it and the motions, so that's on the podium this evening. And then we also put the actual bid results on 11 by 17 on the podium this evening as well. That's what I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Dolores, anything from your end?
I had two issues. One is that the charter commission is going to be meeting on the 27th, that's at 7:00 in the council chambers, so that they will have the public, the charge from the council for what they have to look at at the charter, and they will listen to any public that comes also that night. And the other one is that the state flag out in front is tattered and torn. We realize that, but we have another replacement for it. People do call in all the time and tell us about them, so we couldn't replace it because right now the rope is, to raise and lower it, is frozen in the ice. So, as soon as that thaws, maybe by the weekend, they can get it changed. That's it.
Thank you, Dolores.
I had a question.
Go ahead, please.
Dolores, a comment. Did you say that we, the council comes and asks questions of the charter revision committee?
You tell them what you want.
So, we should be here on the 27th?
Or you have it able to be presented to them as a council, what you think should be considered.
Yeah, if that dates a while, Mike, you could submit in writing to us, and we can just submit it to them. One of us will make it, obviously, so. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to council action. I don't believe we have any resignations or appointments to boards or commissions this evening, so we can, there's no unfinished business, so we'll move right into 3A. Approval of a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the agreement titled "Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects with the Connecticut Department of Transportation." Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager to sign a master municipal agreement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Second?
Thank you. Motion a second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Connecticut Department of Transportation has refined their master agreement with local units of government for projects at KDOT Funds, or CDOT Funds, sorry. If Mike has any further comments, this was run through the town attorney. Pretty standard format, so I'll ask Mike to see if he's got any comments.
Typically, on any project that we would be involved with, like an STP urban project or whatever, we would have to strike up an individual agreement between the town and the DOT for their design services and construction services. That could take upwards of 60 to 90 days sometimes and really stretch out a project. So, really, this is an effort on behalf of DOT, working with CROG, to kind of simplify the process, come up with a master agreement, and then if we were ever granted a specific project, all we do is a one-page addendum to that agreement. So, you know, it should be, you know, a week, 10-day turnaround and stuff, so. It's a good thing.
Questions?
Mike, will, so are most members of CROG going to be signing something pretty much the same?
I think right now there are something like 114 towns, not only CROG towns, but throughout Connecticut, that have already signed this master municipal agreement.
And it's pretty much the same wording for every one of them?
It is the exact same agreement for all municipalities.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Such passes. 3B, approval of a consulting contract between Town of Wethersfield and Rayanne Palmer for the project oversight of the installation of the radio system. Have a motion?
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign a management and consulting agreement between the Town of Wethersfield and Rayanne Palmer.
Second?
Second from Stathie. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you know, Rayanne has retired, but wished to finish up the installation of the radio system. This consulting agreement provides for that opportunity.
Terrific. Any questions about this? It was in our packet. Anybody good with it? Very good. We have a motion and a second in favor of us. All those in favor, rather?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Well, we're flying tonight. If we could have moved like that snowstorm moved today, it would be really good.
Just not as, hope we don't dump as much on the ground.
That's right. We're moving on to 3C. Setting of a public hearing for March 17th, 2014, on a small cities community development block grant seeking funds for renovations to properties owned by the Wethersfield Housing Authority. Do we have a motion?
Motion to set a public hearing for the small cities grant application for March 17th, 2014.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Wethersfield Housing Authority has had tremendous success over the past several years renovating very dated facilities that they own with these grants, and has requested the town make that available to them again this year for additional work at 60 Lancaster, which is an elderly handicap housing facility. The town is an eligible recipient, which the housing authority is not, and we act as the conduit through which they can get these funds. So, we would have to hold a public hearing, facilitate the RFP for the consultant, and basically, overall, manage the grant with the administrator and get this done. They've done a lot of good work over there, and they're still in need, so I would support this wholeheartedly.
Terrific. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions about that, from anybody? This is amazing. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Finally, under other business, D, authorization for the town manager to apply for and accept a dial ride expansion grant with the Town of Newington and Rocky Hill, and sign a memorandum of understanding for the sharing of that service. Have a motion?
Motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and accept a state matching grant program for elderly and disabled demand response transportation dial-a-ride expansion grant, and the amount of $31,773 for Wethersfield, and $89,436 total, and to negotiate and sign a memorandum of understanding with the towns of Newington and Rocky Hill to provide a tri-town medical transportation service.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Dr. Stillwell is here this evening to answer any questions. This is a, this grant helps us expand the basic dial-a-ride service, and it's an annual grant, which really helps provide a much better service for our residents along with Rocky Hill and Newington.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Gus, why are you retiring?
It's detrimental.
It wasn't on here, but I, you know, I wanted to throw it in.
Well, let me say that it's not because of anything negative.
I know, I know, Nancy.
It's a draw to new indifference.
I'm drawing attention to your retirement, obviously, but
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you've done, of course.
Yeah, this grant is a huge asset for us. The conditions of the grant are that it must augment, rather than supplant, any current services, and we had cut back years ago because of fiscal need to four days a week. This allows us to do seamless medical transport five days a week and to a broader geographical area than we were previously providing. And we serve as the fiduciary for the three towns, so we take 10% off the top, which helps offset our administrative cost. And then each of the towns gets $1,000 out of that for their administrative, and then we handle all the negotiation and service with the provider.
Terrific. Questions for Nancy? Any other questions? Jeff?
Thank you. So, obviously, we received a note from, and I want to make sure I'm not, I'm understanding, what we're voting on, the motion authorized the town manager to apply for or accept the matching grant program?
Correct.
Now, do we not also approve the vendor here?
That's next on the agenda.
So, there's two different pieces?
Yes. This is the grant from the Department of Transportation, which is strictly grant money
Okay.
That augments what we, as a town, contribute for the regular dial-a-ride.
Okay, all right. Gotcha. Okay, all right, excellent. No questions.
Great. We have a motion and a second on the table on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
I suppose I ought to just stay here.
You might as well stay here. That moves us on to bids, so 4A is an award of a contract for a dial-ride services. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve a contract for dial-ride, dial-a-service with Curtain Transportation Services?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jeff, you probably want to introduce this, and if Nancy's there for questions.
Yes, we, our current contract with Curtain Transportation Services has expired. We solicited bids for dial-a-ride services, received two bids, the results of which are in your packet. Staff is recommending to stay with Curtain, although they are a higher cost. They have a better track record with the town in providing this service than the other vendor did when we left them several years ago. Dr. Stillwell has done the research on the background, and Curtain has other dial-a-ride services, has provided us dial-a-ride services. The other vendor does not have any current dial-a-ride services, so we would recommend staying with Curtain for now.
Any questions for Nancy or Jeff on this topic?
Yeah, Nancy, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So, this would be, obviously, if we were to go with Curtain, if we were to go with a low bidder, it would be essentially-
Curtain is not the low bidder.
That's what I'm saying. If we weren't approved, Curtain, and we went with a low bidder instead,
Uh-huh.
Would that be basically, from their standpoint, I know they've done this work in the past, but would this, would this basically be a startup? They would have to start up the new service?
It absolutely would, and when we were with them before, they were a subcontractor of Logisticare, with whom we contracted directly, and Logisticare handled all the reservations.
Okay.
So, this would mean that the other contractor would have to hire reservations agents and start a whole process to do our reservation and dispatch service, which, they did dispatch before, but they did not do reservations.
Okay, and this, and this, what we're approving is just for Wethersfield. The grant was for, it looked like it was part of a three-town grant.
Whoever we choose as our provider will also provide the service for the grant.
Okay, and do they also audibly then provide service for Rocky Hill and Newington?
Yes, yes.
So, you wouldn't need the same firm?
Yes, absolutely.
So, where do we stand with, where does Rocky Hill and Newington stand?
They have deferred to us to make that decision.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, you would all be getting the same rate and so forth? It's just-
We pay the bill for all three towns together, and it's the same rate for all three towns.
And then they just sort of like reimburse their, Wethersfield-
They assign their funds to us, totally, and then we just pay all the bills from here.
Okay.
And then they can, you know, it's all audited, they can request anything, anytime, but they go through us. So, if they have problems with the service, they call me. If they have a question about any of the billing, you know, we handle that. But they just simply assign their grant funds to us.
And I would assume that they would concur with the awarding of this bid, or-
They have been extremely pleased with the service we have had in the last three years compared to the prior three years.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we have had so few complaints and so few policy issues in terms of managing the service.
So, all three towns are on the same page
Indeed.
In terms of going with this firm?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Doc.
Councilor Menusos?
So, Curtain Transportation is providing the service now, or is-
That is correct. They are.
Ambassador was how, how long ago?
We ended our contract with them when we were with Logisticare, which expired in, at the end of June 2011. So, we'll be completing three years with Curtain the end of this June.
Okay, and you said the reason for going with a higher bidder was because their service was more reliable, or that Ambassador just doesn't, can't perform the task?
We have had much more consistent service from Curtain. We've had a far better on-time record. Their ability to address issues and resolve complaints has been far superior, and the quality of their vehicles and drivers has been far superior.
So, what was the bid process like? I mean, I'm surprised there's only two, yeah, there's only two bidders.
An RFP went out through finances. It normally would. Two bids were received.
That's it out of, surprising.
We were surprised as well.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm a little sensitive to it, only because I don't want to make the same mistakes that I think we did on the town attorney contract. But I'm a little concerned that we don't have enough other bidders, and we're taking somebody that may be able to do the bid, maybe able to-
No, we're taking our current provider, who has a track record.
Over somebody that may be able to take it for, what was the difference in price?
$23,000.
Twenty. So, those allocated funds that come from other, those other towns, how is that structured?
It's really a dual structure. Our town's dial-a-ride pays a fixed amount per month for up to 1,250 rides. That's our basic dial-a-ride service. The expansion grant, which you just approved, pays an additional amount that allows us to add to that service by providing Friday service in a greater geographical area.
Okay.
Have I addressed your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Just, I think it's more than the price that's involved here. I think the current provider, Curtain, is very, very reliable, and under Ambassador, I can recall many times seeing people at the senior center, they get stranded, they didn't, Ambassador didn't show up. They'd say they were picking up people at, say, 1:30, they show up at 3:00 or 4:00. And so, from a service point of view, for our citizens, Curtain's clearly, clearly superior.
So, we're going with a higher price-
We're going with the current provider.
Because they have, the current provider, even though they're more expensive, because they have better service?
Yes.
Yes.
Not because the firms were equal, and one had better pricing for the town?
I think we're trying to satisfy the needs of a large population, a part of our population who depend on dial-a-ride for critical services and need to get places at times, certain times.
Right, so I agree with you. We're voting on going with a vendor that can provide the service-
That is providing the service now.
That is providing the service, and that will continue to provide the service because they're doing a better job than the previous vendor and can do it even though they're higher in cost. So if we had two firms that were equal in, in services and quality, we would go with the lowest responsible. But this isn't that case, is what you're saying.
I don't know what you're saying, but I, this is the reason I'm voting for it, that it provides better service, they have a track record. I had personal knowledge of people being, when it was Ambassador, which was a nightmare for the seniors, and so if it's not broke-
Yeah, so they're going to provide the service.
If it's not broke, don't fix it.
That's, I agree with that.
Thank you. I want to mention before we vote that there was also some information that I think you provided, Nancy, that was a series of concerns and questions that you asked to be answered by one of the bidders,
I did.
Which was also submitted, which I had a chance to review, and it included in it, if I recall correctly, at least a half a dozen areas of concern that you had, that you asked the vendor to address in response to previous service concerns that had been in play during the time that Ambassador had the contract prior to Curt, Curtain. So I thank you for doing that because I thought you went a little extra distance to be sure he had a chance to respond to that in light of the bid. But also, in reading through that, it was, it was my perception that some of his answers, specifically with respect to equipment and concerns about air conditioning, some of the complaints that you obviously experienced, left a little bit of room for him to perhaps suggest, we're working on it, but we don't have all of that addressed. And then lastly, he, he confirmed that he's not currently providing these services to a municipality like Curtain. So I think that's an important piece of the work that you did behind the scenes. So thank you for that, as always. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions? Again, thank you Nancy, I'm sure we'll have a chance to see you again before retirement.
I hope so.
Thank you. 4B, approval of various construction contracts for the Weathersfield High School renovation project. Steve? Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve the, should I do all of them at once?
Yeah, I think you should list through them, because they should all be included in the motion.
Okay, motion to approve the following contracts for the Weathersfield High School renovation. Concrete to Marguerite Concrete Inc., total contract six-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred. Masonry, Connecticut Mason Contractors, total contract three-million-six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Structural Steel, L&amp;P Gate Company Inc., total contract one-million-three-hundred-thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. General Trades to G Donovan Associates, total contract six-million-fourty-two-thousand dollars. Roofing, Silk Town Roofing Inc., total contract one-million-seven-hundred-fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Aluminum Windows, Enferences and Storefronts to Cherry Hill Glass Company Inc., three-million-four-hundred-eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-five. Drywall and Plaster to GDS Contracting Group, total contract three-million-two-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-six. Acoustical to N.T. Aliva Inc., total contract one-million-three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred. Plumbing to G&amp;R Valley Inc., total contract four-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. Fire Protection, Davis-Omer Sprinkler Company, one-million-two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars. HVAC to M.J. Daly and Sons LLC, total contract fifteen-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. And then Electrical to Ferguson Electrical Company, total contract seven-million-three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Wait for Jeff, because I wanted to take this through, I know the building committee members are here, as well as our contractor and OG and the architect. Wait just one second for Jeff to return. You sound a little bit, yes.
We have a presentation for the architect.
Yep, go right ahead, thank you, Mike.
Gas coming up. Got to change the filter, though.
It's like a safety message, I guess, right?
On our side, okay.
There you go. If, why don't you, I know you're going to start, so go ahead and take us through the presentation. Christine, you're going to do that?
Christine?
We all know each other.
Laurel's not feeling well tonight, and she's got very close to her husband.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, that'll cost us another million.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, Laurel Purcell with ONG Industries. Just kind of walking you through, the whole approach here was to do this, what we called back, way back, option one, which was to proceed forward. And just to give you a general gist of what we're doing, we are delaying the award of a couple of contracts till, till later on. We're, we're calling it July, July of this year. So everybody had received a project cost summary that was sent out, and this presentation is just kind of recapping and walking through the numbers that are on this project cost summary. So overall, the original project cost was the seventy-four-million-eight-sixteen. The value engineering that's on here, one-million-nine-nine-eight-six-twenty-four. I just want to make a mention that if you look on our project cost summary, that dollar lines up with that dollar. These are actually the credits that we'll be getting from the trade contractors, but I just wanted to make a note that the building committee actually did approve additional costs beyond that. There were, there were an additional savings of one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars and two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars in FFNE savings, which is reflected in these dollars, it's just further, it's on page two. So I just wanted you to know that it wasn't just one-million-nine-nine-eight in VE that the building committee has approved, it's really two-point-five million at this point in time, so. The total project cost is eighty-three-million-seven-ninety-four-seven-oh-nine, with the total variance for referendum. Again, it matches our sheet of eight-million-nine-seventy-eight-oh-ninety-two. Now, this does include the alternates that have been approved by the building committee, which are all of the alternates that were in the bid documents, with the exception of eight, nine, ten A and ten B. Eight and ten A and ten B were all to do with flooring, to go to a step-up polished concrete in certain areas, and number nine was photovoltaic panels. This, there's still photovoltaic panels in the base bid, but these are additional panels that were going to be mounted up on, at the gym wall. All the rest of the alternates that we had bid, one through fourteen, were approved. One other item, number thirteen, was an alternate. At bid time, we received credits, but we have since taken this over into value engineering and improved on that credit. So we're not, we're not incorporating the bid price of alternate thirteen, that got absorbed into the value engineering. So just so that you know, all the numbers that you see tonight are including alternates one through seven, eleven, twelve and fourteen. Does anybody have any questions on the alternates before I move on?
Actually, I have just one quick question. Would thirteen, reducing the roof pitch to a quarter inch be, is this part of the alternate?
It is part of the value engineering, so it is already being incorporated into the value engineering dollars, so I can't double dip. I can't take a credit here and under value engineering, so I had to eliminate it here. So the, what happened is at bid time, they really didn't have a good drawing to, to base it on when they were giving prices, and since after the bids were opened, and we have been dealing with a low bidder, we were able to come up with a final design and get a better price on it.
So we are going with the reduced pitch?
Correct.
And I guess this might be a question either for Mike or for Rusty. Having survived three weeks of snowstorms and a roof rake on my roof just this afternoon, would a reduction in roof pitch, if we do get storms like we've had in the past, or even most recently, last couple of days, affect any kind of drainage off of that roof? And if so, would we be fixing leaks and problems in the near future?
The, the purpose of the roof, roof pitch is to get the water off faster, so it just, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that there won't be snow piled up there, because there was, still would be, even with a quarter, with a half-inch pitch, you would still have snow piled up there, it just means it would get to the drain faster, that's all it does, between the half-inch and the quarter inch.
Okay, I'm just-
And as far as the insulation value, the R-value, we have not sacrificed that at all, right?
That's right.
And that the pitch implies with the state requirements?
Good evening. When we made the change, actually when the state changed the, the requirements from a quarter inch per foot to a half inch per foot, there was a lot of controversy about it, because on existing buildings in particular, it creates a problem because the structure is not really designed for a half-inch pitch, and you add up, you start to add a lot of insulation onto the roof, which reduces the, the melting of the snow as it piles up. So that creates problems, it also creates problems with how you flash the, the roof into the existing structure, because it's not designed to be flashed into at a, at a half-inch per foot, and it adds a lot of cost to the project. The state has since, during the course of our project, the state changed that requirement to a quarter inch, and it has allowed everybody to change the, the pitch to a quarter inch. In our case, it's going to help us, we're still maintaining the R-value, the, the pitch is a pretty strong quarter inch per foot. We will get the water off the, the roof with the appropriate number of roof reins. And actually, in many ways, to me, it's an improvement because we don't, we're not building up, you know, fourteen and eighteen and twenty inches of insulation in, in areas where it's really not necessary. And also will, will help alleviate the problem of snow buildup, which could affect the structure.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, what's that mean?
So out of curiosity, what is the dollar value to that reduced roof pitch?
Three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Do we have a list of all those, were those in our packet?
These were not in your packet, we can certainly make them available, we thought you had enough, but we can certainly make them available to you.
It would be nice to see you.
Well, they're going to have to vote on them at some point.
We've got another portion of the list to be voted on at Monday night, and it'll be, it'll be final at that point, so.
On, on the value engineering?
Right.
And then they'll have to come back here as changeable.
Well, they'll all be credit change orders, so I'm not sure if that comes here or not. They'll all be credit change orders.
But with respect to that question, since it's come up, and I had the same question, because it's imperative, as we look at the approvals for this evening, they're obviously dependent on that value engineering and the total number. Could you give us just a flavor of the, of the, I don't know, I don't need to see the thirty-thousand dollars, but maybe the larger ones that led to the, to the two million in value engineering? Can you give us a, a sense of that, I know we'll be talking about them at our next meeting, but-
You mean, you just want, you just want an idea of which-
Yeah, maybe, maybe the highlights of how you achieved the value engineering, because I know that number goes into the total that allows us to arrive at a number for approval.
Well, you mean, you mean like the process of what I did?
Yeah, no, not any of the process, just give me the, a couple of the line items.
Okay.
You gave the roof one, that was three, some three-hundred thousand.
Right, another one was, there was quite a bit, we have, I think there's fourteen rooftop units up on the roof, and there were some aluminum screen walls, pretty much around a lot of them. So we reduced, we reduced the amount of that, that was the, that was a total credit of eighty-five thousand dollars. I'm trying to pick some big ones here. There's, there's a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-three changes, so they, they kind of add up, that's pretty much what it is. We had some temporary, we're, we're fitting out the existing gymnasium into temporary classrooms. So instead of, when, when they bid it, they were told to carry the height of the walls all the way up to the, to the structure. And after the bids came in, we were able to figure out a way of reducing the height, so that saved fifty thousand. Just the, the window framing went from six-inch to two-inch, but, instead of two-by-six, it went from, to two, to two-by-four-and-a-half-inch, just this change of the profile, and that changed eighty-nine thousand dollars. Bio-based tile, floor tile, I'm not sure what a bio-based floor tile is, but we're going to a VCT, which is more standard, and that was a savings of seventy-five thousand. Some, we did some reductions in the kitchen area and the colon, the kitchen and culinary food service equipment, that was a savings of seventy thousand. We changed some storm piping from cast iron to PVC, that was a savings of sixty thousand. There's some duct cleaning that was in the specifications, and all the ductwork in the entire school is going to get replaced. So instead of going, once the ductwork's in and, and doing this cleaning per the certain standard, we're just going to have the contractor deliver the ductwork to the job site with the open end sealed and kept sealed during construction, and not have to do this big effort at the end, and that was a savings of ninety-seven thousand. And also, a big change was reducing the metal panels on the exterior of the building. Pretty much on all the elevations, we had a bunch of metal wall panels going up in front of the existing brick, just to kind of give it a whole encompassing look. So by reducing the metal panels, that saved one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. So those, there's, there's just a bunch of items that, that add up.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so this, this stepped process is, we've already approved, you've already approved bids to date, that we were here last year. The, there was these contracts that were being set up for approval tonight, and I just wanted to clarify the roofing. This is just like a part one of the roofing. You will see in the deferred part, in the deferred area, that we're coming, we're going to come back to you with the roofing again at a later time. So this is just to award all the roofing work, that'll get us through now until this first summer, which is August thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. So it's roofing part one. When we had the roofing bids come in, we specifically told them to separate out the dollars, because we were anticipating this at the time. And so we've got the two different prices and it's a bid price. So what you're doing for the roofing is you're approving the roofing for the first part. So that's the second group, so, so we have approved bids to date, bids recommended for approval. There will be two bids that we're looking to have you reject. And then just to explain the cost to be deferred, there's certain contracts that we don't need right away. The flooring, the ceramic tile, the roofing phase two, which is what I'm referring to, anything past August thirty-first. Painting and food service, all of those particular trades, we do not need until July. We're also going to defer some of the contingency FFNE and technology line items. And that, that, those will be costs that will not be committed until July. So financial summary is, if we have the bids approved to date, the bids recommended for approval tonight, the costs that are being deferred, there are other project costs, owner soft costs, things that are not in the above category. The project cost without the VE would be eighty-five thou, eighty-five million-seven-ninety-three-three-three-three. Minusing out those deferred costs, the total encumbrance as of today, in February, would be seventy-four million-eight-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-six-seventeen. We wanted to show you that, even without the VE incorporated, that we would not be overcommitting. So, just doing the, the extra math, incorporating the VE and committing, the committed, commit the deferred costs in, in July, we will then be at our total project cost, which is eighty-three-seven-ninety-four-seven-oh-nine. So what we're trying to show you is total encumbrance as of February is seventy-four-eight-sixteen-six-seventeen. In, in July, though, that the entire project amount would be encumbered, which is eighty-three-seven-ninety-four-seven-oh-nine. Does anybody have questions on that?
I do.
Okay.
In the, that, on the page before this, in the techno, I think there was a technology line item?
Yes.
What's it, in that, is there like the iPads and stuff in that technology line item? I know there was like eight-hundred thousand or something.
Yes, because if you look on that project summary sheet that I had sent out, you will see that we're allowing them to spend now, between now and July, they can spend two-hundred thousand on FFNE and three-hundred thousand on technology, the rest of the funding is delayed until July. So I'm not sure if some of the iPads are in that, or if all the iPads are in the deferred amount.
I was under the assumption that we weren't going to bond any, a twenty-year bond for stuff that only lasted three years, so I'm wondering why that's still in there.
Well, we're carrying it as a project cost, this is not, we're carrying this as a project cost, so, it's a cost of the project.
But we wouldn't get a, we wouldn't take a bond out for twenty years on items that are only going to last three years, so I'm wondering why it's in the, why it's still in the project?
It could be part of the project cost, but not part of any bond issue.
Okay.
Right, this is not tallying where the funding's coming from, this is just telling you what the project is costing you.
Laurel, I don't mean to jump back, but you had mentioned something that kind of piqued my interest. You said, one of the, the temporary classrooms in the current gymnasium, fifty thousand dollars in savings were coming from, instead of, or from lowering the wall, so instead, instead of going from floor to ceiling, they'd come down to some point.
Right.
Can you explain how that's going to be finished off?
It'll be finished off the same, there's still going to be an acoustical ceiling, so there'll, there'll be a ceiling just like this. It's just that the way that it's tied together will be different. So instead of the sheet rock going all the way up and the studs going all the way up to the deck, they're going to stop short, and the ceiling grid's actually going to be more reinforced to kind of hold it all together. It will all be braced, and it's all going to be engineered.
Okay, so how high is that ceiling?
In the end, it'll be nine feet, finish, to finish, but the walls will be ten, ten feet high.
But it'll be completely enclosed, it's not going to be an open?
Correct, it'll look just like a regular room, you're going to walk into the room, you're going to have sheet rock walls. It'll be painted, there'll be a marker board, there'll be electrical outlets.
So by comparison, that height, how does that compare to the current classrooms, the ceiling height?
I'm not sure what they are now. I'm not sure what they are now.
It's actually a little bit higher.
It is, okay.
Right now, it would range anywhere from eight feet to nine.
Okay, thank you.
I'd wanna follow up that, Don O'Toole, Stathi, those are temporary.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're temporary, but they're gonna be there three years, so it's important to make sure that they're...
Yeah, no, agreed, agreed, but I'm...
That's permanent to me, I mean, so it's gotta be, it's gotta be a better classroom.
Until you get to my age, three years will be a lot more permanent.
Yeah, they are meant to be, they're designed to be permanent in that respect. They'll have sprinklers, they'll have lights, they'll have HVAC.
Thanks.
Okay, so. So then, this gets us to where we're looking for the action, so. I don't know if you wanted to bypass this and go to the space waiver or not, because there's one other slide.
No, let's stay, let's stay on this, portion, with questions and comments first.
So the current agreements that are in place now, when, when does that work actually end? Is this all, the timing is these expire soon, and this next round that you're bidding is gonna start up immediately following?
The only next round that I'm bidding would be the two that are listed on the bottom. So, come, just to ask your question again, I'm sorry.
The existing agreements that are in place now for work, those basically expire when, and what's the timing of that compared to these ones that we're gonna be approving tonight?
The site work will carry you, the site work package that you've approved will carry you through to the end of the job. The structural steel and the, the concrete for the additions are the only other two that were from phase one. They will be done this spring, when the elevator addition is constructed. That's the only addition left, that hasn't been started yet, that's on the opposite side of the building, that's not supposed to start till the spring. And the demo and the abatement contract was, which was the other one you approved, that carries you through to the rest of the job as well, so that'll carry you through until January or February of 2017. So some of them are all encompassing, and then the other, there's only two that were just for the additions, and those were right in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
If you could just correct. Sixteen, seventeen, seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sixteen. Hey, my medication's starting to go.
Yeah. Or kick in.
Sorry, sixteen. We're only gonna be here for three years.
I just wanna follow up Stathi's question, though, too, because that raised another issue. So, you identify what's going now, of the 12 that we're talking about approving tonight, how many of those would, would begin immediately, and how many would be phased in, let's say, over the next six months of those 12?
Okay, this concrete won't start until the summer, the steel won't start until the summer. Everybody else, windows, they're gonna get started right away with their shop drawings, it's a long lead item, but you won't see them for a couple of months, as far as physically out there. And the acoustical, that's it, those are the only ones that aren't starting right away. Everybody else will be starting right away.
So HVAC, electric plumbing, all the behind-the-wall stuff would commence immediately, assuming these were approved?
Correct, well, Mason, yeah, immediately, meaning you gotta sign the contract and get immobilized, it's, it's a three-week process, but yes, the Mason will be first, front and center, that you'll see out there.
And as the building committee looked at this group that they had to approve, those, I assume, that was a factor? These are time-sensitive issues, not only for the bid awards, in terms of the amount, but also the continuation of the project?
Correct, correct.
On, on the schedule, correct?
Correct.
And, and the deferments, obviously, the opposite is true, you have a little wiggle.
Correct, we can wait till July for them.
Not a ton, but a little.
July, that's the date.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Jeff?
Yeah, we're approving a lot of different contractors. Could we put on the record our experience either with these contractors, or the work that we've done to validate that these contractors produce good work?
Pretty much all the contractors that are on here, with the exception of Davis Olmer, we have extensive experience with all of these contractors, so we've scoped them all, we met with all of them, we met with Davis Olmer, we just don't have firsthand knowledge of them, but they're, we checked their references, there's not like there's anything wrong with them, so we, we know all of these contractors.
Okay, and talk a little bit just about Ferguson. One of the awards is, is for Ferguson Electrical Company, and it appears, based on the information we got tonight, that they were by 100, 200,000 dollars, the low bidder on the electrical work. They were also the low bidder on a couple of other elements, at least initially, and then they withdrew their bids. I assume that Ferguson Electrical and Ferguson Mechanical are sister companies, or...
Yeah, two different companies, they're legally two different companies.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
But like related ownership, or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, could, could, just to put on the record, because that, we have talked publicly about the fact that one of the reasons that the, the number, the total number is likely to be, you know, well over 80 million, is that we had a couple of bids that were withdrawn, and maybe we could just put on the record the, why those, the two Ferguson bids, or what the explanation was for why those two bids were withdrawn, the two low bids were withdrawn?
They had, they, they actually had a meeting, they met with, I think the attorney was there, they brought in, I think they brought in paperwork showing that they had made a mistake, whether it was when they were bringing costs forward, or their Excel didn't capture it, or something, they, they said they had made a mistake.
On both?
Yeah, they, they had to withdraw, they gave us three bids, actually, they gave us a bid for plumbing, HVAC, and a combo, so they withdrew all of them.
Okay.
I guess they made the same mistake on all of them.
Okay, but not on the, but I guess it's a different comp, different slash related company?
Correct.
That they didn't make a mistake on the electrical.
Correct, the electrical was, the bid was on a different day as well, the electrical bid was already in, so the plumbing was another, at another time.
They produced their draft, actually, they produced their office work that showed the error, and Christine and I were in the meeting with the attorney, and met with Mr. Ferguson and his son, and they went over it line by line, and there was an error, which, under the statute, allows them to withdraw without penalty.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
Similar to Jeff's question, I know there's a lot of contracts here, but normally, what we would ask is, or what I would ask is, that we just kinda get a, something from you, just stating what other larger contracts each of these have done? I know there's 12, but I'd like to just hear, like, for Marguerite, for each one, like, what kind of experience they actually have?
Do you want it tonight, or do you want it as a document afterwards? All right.
I'd like to just kinda, I mean, we're voting on these tonight, so I kinda wanna, since we're the ones responsible for voting on it, I kinda wanna hear kinda their experience.
All right, well, the biggest, the biggest, the biggest, I'm trying to think of a word, that's, what's important to us is the fact that they've worked on an occupied school before. So each of these contractors have, and they understand what's involved with working around the bus schedules, working around sensitive areas as far as, with the students. Marguerite Concrete, we just worked with them in Old Lime High School, and also, I believe they were up at one of our projects in Bristol, I think it, I don't know if it was, it might have been the Forestville project there as well. So when we meet, when we sit down with these contractors, to make sure that they, they understand what the, the rules are with working around the school. Connecticut Mason Contractors, they've been around on our projects, I don't know, have you had them? I mean, you wanna list names? I don't know all the projects that they've been on. I mean, our company's been with, has worked with them on numerous projects, and they understand the scope of the work. L and P Gate, same thing.
Could you give us a list, I guess?
I could, afterwards, it'd be a lot easier than me rattling them off.
Then, I mean, would it matter if we put this off for two weeks to vote, so we could take a better look at these? There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of contracts.
When, when do these bids expire?
We told them to hold them for another 30 days, so if most of the bids came in December 11th, it would be January, February, March, April, you have until March or April, but the bids expiring is not what's critical, the schedule's what's critical.
Yeah, it's, it's important to note that these bidders have been holding their prices. We've asked them to continue to hold, they have agreed to do that. I guess my question to Counselor Hurley would be, if there are questions or concerns that you have with the bidders who have been brought before you this evening, that would be helpful for us to have that, if perhaps there is a certain trade that you want some more information on. There was, you know, bidding process followed here, a scope review with the bidders that not only involved ONG and the architect, but town board events staff, building committee members, so these have thoroughly been vetted, references checked, they all consider responsible bidders in responding to the RFP, so if there's something specific, that would be helpful.
The specific is, I'd just like to see what these contractors have done on other major contracts, if it's been on major renovation, or just, they're just going into a school. We just, I'd just like to see those.
Well, they, they actually list the projects that they've worked on in the bid, bid proposals, but it's probably too much of a task to get a copy of that to everybody, because they, they put right on there their qualifications. They always, it's part of the form proposal, it's, it's a big document, and we have them for each of these, so.
I mean, if they've been deemed to meet the terms of the RFP, you know, we can't disqualify because they didn't work on a project that perhaps we'd like to have seen them work on. I mean, they, they have been vetted, so I'm not certain what the outcome is after you've looked at the list, will the committee be directed to go back out to bid? I guess that's the alternate here, is what do we do once you have that information?
I mean, that's a potential, I mean, we're responsible for, we're the ultimate responsibility for these contracts.
True, and I'm letting you know that a process was followed here to get to this point.
Okay, but I don't, I don't think we have enough information.
The same process with all the other contractors that have been brought before you for approval.
Yeah, and I asked the information, and I received the information on, and it was, since it was only a couple of contracts at a time that came, it was provided. I think there's just a lot of contracts there, it'd be nice to see that same information.
Well, we can certainly get it to you.
Maybe to follow up, I mean, how many of these, these contracts, or how many of these bidders were selected that weren't the lowest bidder?
They, they were all, they're all the lowest bidder. Connecticut Mason Contractors was not low on their base bid, but once you awarded, once certain alternates were awarded, they became low, so they're the low bidder. They're all, they're all the low bidder.
HVAC was not, but the low bidder backed out.
Correct, same thing with plumbing, those are your two second contractors.
Right.
So they're all your low response, lowest responsible bidders.
Thank you.
And these were vetted entirely by the full, the full building committee as well?
Yeah, this process has been taking place for...
How long, I guess, has this?
Well, what, December?
Yeah, since December.
So this isn't new information at all, nor are these contractors new?
No.
But I don't think we were sent the contract, not that I saw.
No, you were not sent their forms, form of proposal, what they send in to give us a bid. That's, each one is about quarter inch thick, each proposal, but they're, in there, they list all their schools that they worked on, and, and all that.
Right, we're happy to provide that information, but that is the role of the building committee to go through that process on your behalf, with the involvement of your staff and the board of events staff, and that, I can assure you, has taken place.
Well, Jeff, do you have any of this information, or Laurel, I mean, can we take a recess and get the list, and just read them off, rather than postpone a vote?
Where are the originals? Do you have them upstairs?
They're not in the file, I don't know if she's got them. They're not involved, we can go.
Give us, take a recess, we'll see what you find.
Okay.
Jerry, we need a motion for that, for recess?
Sure, I move we go into motion to recess. I don't think we do, though. I don't think we need a motion.
Okay. Take a 20-minute recess.
Second motion, we might not need.
ESPN Building C, Salisbury School Athletics Center, Holchester P.K., kindergarten through second grade, East Tatum, fourth grade to eighth grade height, uh, school, Stone Ridge Phase One Mystic, Connecticut. There's a bunch of drywall projects. Just a list of a few from each one.
You get the HVAC?
These are just, read a few, right?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make sure we do some due diligence on these things. MJ Daly, this is the HVAC bid. This is the largest one. They did Trumbull High School, Carrington Elementary School, MD Fox Elementary School, Global Communications Academy, Waterbury Career Academy, Pathway Academy, the UConn Basketball Facility, Francis T. Maloney High School, Orville Platt High School. Another big one they had was... Bay State Medical Center, Clastonberry East Hartford Magnet School, Killenly High School was a big one. East End Elementary School, that's in Bridgeport, Bethel High School. Cherry Hill, what are they doing? Aluminum windows, okay. Goodwin College. Yale University, Department of Conservation Services, UMass, Goodwin College. So that's the glass, glass and glazing guy. Davis-Omer, Wilbur Cross Elementary School, East Rock School, CCSU New Academic Center, MD Fox Elementary, Craig Public Safety Academy, UCHC Inpatient Tower and Staff Parking Garage. Town of Berlin, Berlin High School renovated is new. Town of Guilford High School renovate, this is the plumber. Town of Norwich Technical School, Town of Avon, Avon High School, Hoffman Auto Group, Hoffman Nissan, Town of Montville, the Montville High School. Daughter of Immaculate Conception, New Britain, Marion Heights. Town of Watertown, Watertown High School. Kelly School in Norwich. Town of Griswold, Griswold Elementary School. Forestville K through eight in the city of Bristol. And Quinnipiac University Health Professionals Center, Health Profession Center. That's the plumber.
Here's G. Donovan, I just like to get the school's page.
G. Donovan's General Trades. Stafford High School, Norwalk High School, East Tatum Four Through Eight School, ADA Design for Greater Bridgeport Community Mental Health Center, Terryville High School, Bergen, CI Exterior Improvements. That's the General Trades. We got the Coast Guard Academy did some work there. General Dynamics Electric Boat, Coast Guard Academy, Coventry Public Schools. Structural Steel, Goodwin College. Did some work for the state of Connecticut at the, at the college. They've worked in the city of Hartford.
Here's, I believe, some school, oh, you did that already.
I did, yeah, we already had that one. Anything else?
No, I have some more questions. Okay, the General Trades, what is that, that's a lot of money, what does that entail?
That entails doors, frames, hardware, like the Division 10 specialty, anything that's in Division 10. The architectural mill work, that's probably the biggest part of their packages. They do all the casework, so they're responsible for all that. So they're, they're, they're a bunch of different packages. It's a lot of the '06, the interior mill work, the doors, and the Division 10 stuff, lockers.
Have any of these, are any of these contractors currently in any major lawsuits with any of the contracts that they have? Do you do due diligence like that to make sure there's no major lawsuits going on?
Correct, yes, yes, no, there's not.
There's not a lot of them that have not, okay.
You have more questions, Mike?
No.
Anything else?
Just a comment. I'd like to see these things move forward tonight only because a couple of weeks ago in the Harvard Business Journal, there was an article on builders' dilemmas. And with the things the way they're going with the trades, the estimators, once a project is finally awarded, they have to go out and purchase the materials right away because the costs are escalating, et cetera, right? They run into a problem. So I'd hate to see these bids run out and us having to start from scratch because it would increase our material costs probably dramatically.
Thank you, Mary. Question, have there been, I know these bids were open a few months ago. Have there been any bids for large municipal projects that have been open since then that we've seen that would indicate either that the increase in the cost of construction is continuing or abating?
We have not had anything open since this job ourselves, so I haven't heard of anything else in the paper, you know, hitting. I haven't seen anything else, any other news from other places. So, no, I'm not aware right now. Rusty, you don't have anything else coming in, right?
I will add, if I, I will add something about the cost, though. Al D. Vincentes, who works, who worked for Haller and Sage, also sits on a trade association for the state of Connecticut in the construction trades. He started off in the trades first and sits on an advisory council of the state of Connecticut. They're seeing 30% increases in bids. Basically, from last year, when someone determined the recession was over, the state of Connecticut issued a billion dollars worth of work. And from there, from then on, they were seeing 30% increases per year. So what we're seeing in terms of escalation is consistent to what the state's seeing in terms of their escalation in costs.
Thank you.
Is, we're going to talk about the waiver, I guess, next, or?
Yes, I think you guys were going to give us an update on the submission of the waiver. Obviously, that's a part of how you arrived at the deferment amounts.
Can I just have the presentation in paper?
Yes. The status on the waiver, we did submit all the documentation for the Bay Standard waiver. I worked with the superintendent and the superintendent submitted that, those documents to the office, the DAS office. Since then, I have spoken with Paige Farnham, who was in the Grants Division, just to see how the conversation had gone regarding the legislative meeting. And she was very positive about it and indicated that, yes, from her understanding that there's a, that the, you know, the waiver would be granted. And what we're looking for is a waiver to the amount of the reimbursement that the town gets, which is 50.7%. So all that information has been submitted. Our next step is to file the EDO 49R to increase the cost because that, those two things, those two documents go hand in hand. And now we would be, we'll be waiting for a response from the Commissioner's office.
Thank you, Rusty. Jeff?
Rusty, those last two period, those last two elements of the timetable, we'll submit and then we'll hear back. Do we have any idea how long those two processes would take?
The second part is easier because that's more of an electronic filing and it's just a matter of completing the paperwork, which we will do tomorrow because we were waiting for the decisions at today's meeting. The first part, which is the waiver information, that's all been submitted. And I think it's a matter of following up with them. You know, we submitted, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. And so we'll probably follow up with them and say, you know, where do they stand with it? They need some time to look at the documentation and then maybe they'll give us a call if there are any questions on it. So the process can take time and, you know, the best way to do is give them a little bit of time to absorb the information and then give them a call to sort of prompt them along.
So is this likely weeks, months?
I really can't say. It could be weeks, but it could also be a few months. It all depends on where we end up. And I think in this particular case, there was a meeting with them, with the legislative team. So I think that's, that has put it on the, on the higher priority. So I'm just guessing that it'll take a lesser amount of time. I mean, I've typically seen it go as much as two to three months.
Is the timing of that dependent on us giving them a hard number now as well?
No, the timing of the waiver is simply a matter of going through the process and saying that's what needs to happen. We've been advised to file the EDO 49 as soon as possible. And that's what's, that's what the numbers will reflect on the revised document.
Based on your experience, Rusty, do these waivers, is there a high success rate? Do they usually go through, these requests for waivers?
Well, the waivers go through, you know, at various rates. I mean, I've had some go through at about 15 or 20% of what you're asking for gets approved. Others are 60, 70% of what you're asking for. We put in, or we were able to justify in our, in our proposal more than 100% of what we need to say that these are the reasons why all this square footage needs to be reimbursed. And ultimately, we're just looking for 100%. But we're, it always behooves us to ask for more, justify more because if they disagree with us in some areas, then they may reduce it. But the idea being if they reduce it and it still came down to 100% of what we're asking for, that'd be, that'd be fine. So that's one aspect of it. But in our case, I think with the legislative team, meeting with the Commissioner, I think that's made a big difference and there's been discussions there. I wasn't at the meeting, but the impression I got from Paige was that the meeting went well and that she was expecting it to be granted.
I just have kind of a comment on the waiver. If it's, if it's not approved or partially approved and we don't get any other funding, we would probably have to go to referendum to get more money. Or we have an unfinished building if the referendum doesn't pass and there's not really a contingency for that possibility. That's correct, right?
Yeah, at this point, we don't know, you know, when you say partially approved or... If it's not approved, then yes, then we have to look at the way of coming up with the additional funds. The partial approval would mean that whatever is not approved, then the committee would have to decide whether to cut back scope. How do we deal with it at that point?
Right, but if we approve these contracts now, there's no way to cut back on that scope because we already approved the contracts. scope, because we already approved the contracts.
We would still be within our referendum amount, but yes, we would, we'd need to move forward. We would be able to, because some of the work would be done much later on, so with the approved contracts, you could, if you delete the work, let's say you said we weren't gonna do a certain aspect of the project, then you would be seeking credit changes from those contracts.
Okay, because it looks like, if it doesn't get approved, it looks like painting, looks like painting and flooring were some of the major items that could potentially not get done.
Those are the contracts that are being deferred, yes.
Right. So it kind of paints us into a corner to have to kind of, we're kind of in a hard place. We have to approve these contracts and kind of hope that we get money, basically.
That's where we are.
If we don't approve these contracts, is it your strong belief that the overall cost will be higher, based on the trends that we've seen in the last eight, nine months?
I defer to ONG, but in my experience in the past, that's been the case when contracts have been deferred, even if we've gone back out to bid a second time, you know, thinking, actually, what's happened a couple of times, we've done value engineering, thinking, okay, now we're gonna go back out and get an even more competitive number, and found that the bids came in higher still, and we had lost all the value engineering that had been, you know, all the reductions that had been put in. So I've had that experience occur, too.
And is that somewhat consistent with what Al was reporting to you? That the prices are obviously going up? Yes.
It's definitely not gonna cost you less.
Right, so Rusty, then, if the contracts are approved tonight, the state doesn't come through with the space waiver, we have an unfinished building, or unfinished project from the original scope, how does that affect the reimbursement?
What we would have to do is actually, if the state says we're not gonna give you any waiver for the space standards, which I think would be a little unusual, but let's say that's the scenario, then we would have to sit back and reevaluate and look at how we would make up the difference, because you want to maintain your status as renovation, you know, renovation status, which requires you to do a certain amount of work as basic to the, to your, which ties into your reimbursement rate and your ability to get reimbursed for items that would otherwise be ineligible. So that implication is fairly significant, so we would have to make sure that whatever we do, that we still meet the criteria for renovation, which may mean that you would have to go for more money, and that's just, if you didn't get the waiver, that would have to have, to maintain your renovation status.
Let me make sure I understand, so we've crafted, you've crafted kind of this plan to keep within the $75 million referendum? So if we don't get that waiver, and we've spent the 75 million expecting a reimbursement of whatever it was, 31 million?
Around.
Okay, around there. That 31 million is in jeopardy?
If you, if you change the scope of the project that you're not complying with renovation status, yes. Not all of it, I mean, because you still, there are certain items that are still eligible for reimbursement, but there are other items that are ineligible unless you have renovation status, which the project has received. So we're under the renovation status, which allows us to make things that are ordinarily maintenance or repair items or replacement items, which are typically being ineligible, are now eligible. And if we don't maintain our renovation status, then those become ineligible.
So if we don't get a space waiver, then we're gonna have to go back to the public for additional money, no matter what, whether we approve these tonight or not, is what you're telling me.
I think that's accurate, yes.
So that puts us in a very difficult position. I didn't understand that until now. Food for thought for this body.
Other comments?
Well, I just had, first, two questions, and then more of just a statement. First question is, the variance from the, what is currently expected for cost versus what the referendum was is roughly around $9 million?
Yes.
And then the space waiver, if that was approved by DAS, or, I don't know if it's the legislature that needs to do it, or just DAS would do it, the waiver would be for how much?
Actually, about 11, around 11 million plus.
11 million, okay. Then, no matter, I don't know, and I don't know if you would have the answers to this, or if it would be our legislative delegation, where would that 11 million dollars come from?
It would increase the grant from the state from 30 million to 41 million plus.
So it would come from?
From the state.
The state?
Yes.
And if, what I'm reading and hearing about the state is, we're currently in a projected surplus for this fiscal year, ending June 30th, but projected deficits of billion-dollar plus over the next two fiscal years and the out years. So we're asking the state to give us 11 million dollars to grant this waiver, and no matter what, it's gonna come from, if it's not gonna come from Weathersfield taxpayers, it's gonna come from taxpayers of the state, if I'm not mistaken. So we're asking, the pie in the sky is the 11 million dollar waiver, and people will be on the, taxpayers would be on the hook for that 11 million dollars. I guess it's not a question, but more of a statement.
So you'd mentioned that the, all the existing bids, everybody's held their price firm for 30 days. When does that expire?
They, their, their prices are actually held for 90 days, and we got them to extend it another 30. So if it was a December 11th bid opening, it would expire April or something. This is, we're at the point now where it's not really about the bids expiring, because we need to maintain the schedule, the overall schedule.
Right. So I think Mike had, Councilor Hurley had mentioned about whether two weeks would matter, and you said that the prices were held. There's a two-week delay from here, two weeks out. Does that impact the timeline?
Will two weeks impact us?
I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm wondering if that's gonna provide any more clarity on, from, like, our legislative delegation, because we're pinning all our hopes on them right now.
Well, I'd like to address all that before we go on, but to those points.
Well, do you want?
Yeah, let me, let me sort of, I want to summarize some of what we've heard, obviously, because this is a fairly important decision. We've, as a council, have before us, obviously, something that we need to decide with several moving parts in it. So just, I want to recap a couple of points and then address a couple of loose ends that haven't been included in the discussion, that are important as we look at what we're doing tonight for, and obviously have discussed among ourselves and the leadership. But, you know, some 60, 70 days ago, we obviously became aware of the overages that were surfacing in the bid results. We put into play several initiatives to respond to that. One is, of course, that we began to have discussions about the bid waiver for, I'm sorry, the foot waiver with the state with DAS, and then we also began discussion with our delegation about legislative action to respond to overages that are typically not uncommon in projects like this. And Senator Fontfarre, legislative representative Moran, Tony Guerrero, and so forth, we met several times with them, and began to have discussions with them about alternatives in addition to the space waiver, in light of what was at that time close to 12 million in overage. So we did that. We asked the building committee to go back and take a look at, obviously, value engineering to begin to close the gap a little bit, which they were pretty confident they could get at some of that. And obviously, they've done some significant work in that regard, over $2 million in value engineering, with, appears to be, from what I think all of us have heard, and Steve has obviously sat on the building committee, and we've also had discussion with the full building committee about this, are supporting that do not impact programs or the quality of what we're trying to do on the school, which, we heard some of that tonight. So with respect to how we decide this decision tonight to go forward, what's pressing us as a council, and what's occurred to me, as I've looked at over the last three weeks and have had dialogue with council members, we need to be, this is a time for leadership, in my mind, for our town. All of us at the council table know that none of us at this table have contributed to the story as far as the overage. That's a reality of a lot of variables that we've heard about. But we do have an obligation at the council table to, to be decisive about how we're gonna solve it. So we've had this discussion over the last few weeks, and I've talked to almost every councillor about it at some point, and my feeling on it is, is that we have identified an amount of money today to approve that keeps our contracts going forward, keeps our project on time, allows us to stay within the scope of the bonding that exists today. But it also is not being done in a vacuum. We understand that we are requesting a space waiver from the state that should and could be of some help. We are requesting help from the legislature, which we have gotten assurances and discussion behind the scenes, should and could be additional help. And ultimately, at the end of the day, those two things may contribute, and we are hopeful they'll contribute to closing the final gap that will allow us to continue forward on the project. So the distinction that we've done tonight through the work of the building committee along with ONGG is allowing us to make a decisive decision to hold these prices today that will assuredly go up if we do not do that, only worsen our problem, which we have, in my mind, an obligation to our community to retain and control these costs before they get worse. But also unquestionably, laid before us, the decision that needs to be made in light of the fact that there are some unknowns. So if those unknowns work in our favor with respect to not only the space waiver, but also the legislature, which I've gotten some very strong assurances about in discussion, we then have our third alternative, which is going back to our voters for referendum support. I said publicly some two months ago that that, in my mind, is our last option, that I would prefer not to do, just because the groups that have gotten together to support this project, put this project forward, including the previous leadership, which put the work on the table as an achievement, which I'm happy they did, we can't be sure that those folks can generate that energy and commitment once again. And so we are exhausting all of the steps to avoid the need to ask our taxpayers to dig into their pockets again. So what's before us tonight reflects those initiatives. So I'm certainly speaking on behalf of the leadership that sits at the council tonight, and will tell you that our discussions have led us to feel that we are prepared to make that commitment and take responsibility for that decision tonight, along with all the ramifications that come from the next six months. So that if the, if, if in fact, the space waiver does not materialize, if in fact, the legislature does not step up and close a gap, and if in fact, we are forced to go to referendum at some point to keep us on project after we make this commitment tonight, it's on us, and I'm prepared to take that leadership. So I share that with you, and I also have to tell you that, in my mind, after long discussions about this phase, there's no question in my mind, a failure to vote on this as an approval is a vote to stop this project. And that's something I'm very concerned about, obviously want to avoid. So I certainly understand the questions, I appreciate the caution, but this is a time for decisive leadership. And in light of that, I think we should move the question. So we have a motion and a second in front of us for the approval of these bids?
Yeah, I have one more comment.
Certainly, absolutely, stopping.
I don't think that necessarily voting no, I don't think I've gotten the answer yet, necessarily means that we're stopping the project. The question was, the bid prices?
Excuse me, excuse me. Mayor, did you call the question?
I did.
Okay.
There's no response.
I'm sorry?
You can't speak after that?
They can't speak after it.
You just have to take a vote.
I think he can withdraw the question if he wants to.
Well, I would like to hear you finish your point, though, so with that in mind, that's okay.
We're not gonna get bogged down in details, right?
No, that's fine. Go ahead, finish your point, but I do want to say-
Parliamentary procedure, it's not a bog down in detail.
I appreciate that. I do want to say that I don't think we'll receive any new information in the next two weeks that will change where we are, but certainly I understand if that point is being made, so.
Thank you.
Let you finish, stopping.
So the question, still to me, and I think to Councilor Hurley's point, is, so the bid prices were held, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, the bid prices were held, so if they're not approved tonight, and there's more time to have discussions with the legislative delegation, or whatever it is, I don't know what may or may not happen in two weeks, will that materially delay the project timeline?
It will materially delay the project by two weeks, because right now, we're showing a November 19 completion date now, so now, I mean, every, we are at the critical path, so every day of delay is a delay, is a day of delay.
And I think, I think we were, we were talking about trying to get these approved as early as December, so we're now pushing March, so I want to be cognizant of that, with due respect. So, no, I do want to move the questions. So we have a motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? abstained? Thank you, I appreciate everybody getting behind this. I know it's a delicate situation, some very important decisions, and I appreciate unanimous support for it going forward. Excellent, thank you. Okay.
Rejected.
And, yep, we have to reject it. Yes, we have to have a motion, Steve, you're gonna have a motion on the rejection of those two, which we did separately on the second page.
Motion to reject and rebid the following two contracts, painting to the McKenzie Service Corp, and the elevator, Otis Elevator, reject those two bids.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, a second. Any questions about those rejected bids? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And we don't, we don't, do we need a vote on the deferment, Jeff? Or no? No, okay, very good. Before we move on to the last gen items, thank you, I know you're not feeling well, you're up there punting some tough shots at it. Thank you for your work, Rusty, and the work of the building committee on getting this before us, keep us on track, thank you. The last items are minutes from the meetings. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of January 22, 2014.
Second.
Any changes, additions, modifications? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you. And the second set of minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the town council's special meeting of February 1, 2014, is drafted.
Second.
Thank you, any changes, additions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And finally?
Make a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes of February 3, 2014.
Second.
Second.
Any additions, changes, modifications?
I had just one change.
Mike?
On our packet of 144 pages, page 143, the third paragraph down, it says, Mr. Fortunato, I think it's Ms. Fortunato, commented that practically every area in this building.
I'm sorry, I'm-
You want Mike to get credit for that, Christine?
Page 12.
I'm sorry.
Page 12.
It's the second to last page on the last set of minutes.
Oh, my God, I changed it in five places, so, all right, so it's the second to the last page? Oh, again, all right.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Sorry, Christine.
Any other changes? Other changes, modifications? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you. Last item is public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to finish our evening? Gus, what a surprise. Come on up.
Gus Colantonio, 16 Moors Avenue. I'm gonna be like part of the furniture around here, you know? Good presentation, but I do have a couple of questions, and I'm not a building expert. But on the roof, a quarter inch per foot, it seems to be flat. That means like, you know, the sidewalks that we have, they have a quarter inch per foot, you know? That means 48 feet for every foot inclination. In the future, are we gonna get any problems with leaking roofs? Because this is, as far as I'm concerned, is a flat roof, not a regular, normal roof. Value engineering, we got, we got like, you know, a positive $2,000, $2 million credit. I worked on a lot of those. But a lot of times, what happens with the value engineering is that you remove a $15 a square foot item, let's say, you get back something that costs five, but you only get the credit for 10, or like, you know, five. So we, most of the time, with the value engineering- So we, most of the time, with the value engineering, the property owner or the owner gets less for what's been traded. The third question that I have, it says, we have a lot, a lot of trades involved, all at the same time, and, and it seems to me that the town is responsible for all of that. What happens when one shows up, and certain amount of work was supposed to be done, and he cannot do it because it's not finished, he has to go home, and pretty soon, he's going to claim a delay, and it's going to cost us more. What's going to happen with that? Well, I hope that somebody is looking after all of these anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Other public comment? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Looks like we have another full house tonight, Mayor. All those supporters of that high school, where are they when we have all these problems, right? You're up here saying, let's spend, spend, spend. Now you've got some money problems, and where are they? You spoke about a lot of issues tonight, Mayor, and what comes to mind is that, and then, there were some issues I wanted to talk about, but I know, because I missed the first section, I'm, I'm limited. But first of all, the police station that you built some few years ago up the street was over budget. The Silas, Silas Dean Middle School ran over budget. This building ran over budget. Wouldn't you think, and of course, web school, completed what, 10, 12 years ago? And is it really completed? No, it went over budget because you didn't do what you said you were going to do. And even as of this day, you haven't done it. Put new windows in. Can you believe, can you imagine how much energy we've lost over the years because of mismanagement? I call it mismanagement when you, when you do something like that. And now here, you have this other operation, and oh, yes. Where, where are the people that were just sitting here a few minutes ago to hear what the public has to say? They left also. They said, bye, we don't want to hear from the public, we just want your money. So, doesn't give a good impression. They're no different than the Board of Education when they come to the town council meeting and, and present their budget. They get up and walk out before the public gets up to this podium and starts talking. But anyway, we've had a number of budget overruns over the years. You would think that you would have learned your lesson, and I think this is a, this is a tremendous lesson that we're learning now, because when we start looking at the items that you're now downgrading in this school, first they were talking about, and some things may have changed, but the thickness of the concrete, of, of the asphalt, you know, reduce it to save a few bucks. In the long run, you're going to pay dearly for that. But the pitch of the roof, I don't understand why you're putting on these flat roofs. They should be this way. They should be cheaper to put on, maybe they cost a little more money in the, upfront, but over the long run, they, they, they drain water. They don't have the kind of problems that they do with these flat roofs. And I'm thinking back, only six, eight months ago, when the Weathersfield Housing Authority wanted to put a new roof on some building that had 40 or 50 units in it down, I don't even know where it was, what street it's on, but it was $600,000 or $800,000 to put a roof on, a flat roof. That's horrendous, and that's what you're going to be looking at with these flat roofs 10, 15, 20 years from now. And of course, if you start skimping, like you've been skimping, and talking about skimping, because your estimators, whoever those estimators were on this project, did such a poor job, we're going to be in the same boat a few years from now, after the thing is done, looking at repairing, repairing, because we didn't do a good job, because our estimators, who came in with $74,816,000, so many dollars, just threw that out there. To me, we're up to 90 grand, we're up to $90 million now on this thing, if we went the, what they said they were going to do, what they sold to the public. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. Now things are being eliminated, things are being chinsed down, or quality reduced in order to get this thing somewhat done, that 10 years later, you're going to have to redo a number of new things, because you didn't do them now. You're going to put in the system for, uh, what do they call them? Cameras. Yeah, you're going to put the wires in, but many, a third of the cameras themselves aren't going to be put in now. How are you going to pay for those later on, Mayor? Like web school? Will it ever be done? I mean, this is what you're up against, and, and how could anybody go into a deal like this, not knowing what their real costs were going to be? Now you're finding out that, oh, well, the economy has created this issue. Oh, these other issues are popping up, why this is costing so much more. When you start looking at this, you're, I believe, if you took, if you took the quality reductions that you're putting into this building, and the issues that you're putting off on the side for someday later on, divided against that total $75 million, you're probably looking at 15 or 20 percent overrun, right now. We didn't buy in, I didn't vote for it to begin with, because I stood at this podium and I says, "Don't do it." And you all know that. Now we're hearing about the space waiver. How much discussion went on with that space waiver that you spoke about tonight? Why didn't they design it in the beginning to fit the amount of students that we need, that we're going to have in that building? You know, I know, there's going to be reductions of students in that building as we go through the years. What your building is something that, to fill it up, you're going to have to import students from somewhere else. And why should the town of Weathersfield citizens be, be paying for, for something that we're going to fill the school up with others, children from other schools? The charter schools, the academies are going to be taking students away from us over the years, and we're going to see that, and I've spoke to you about reducing one of our elementary schools. We've got to save money somewhere, but I, I don't see that really happening. All I hear tonight is, and I'll use the word, threats. If we don't do this, this other thing is going to happen, and we're going to be in trouble. If, if we don't achieve a certain reimbursement, like, because we cut something out, we're in big trouble. I mean, how does somebody get into a bind like that? We have lawyers, we have citizens of high caliber sitting here, and we're in this position now. Those contracts should have been locked in before you started, started anything on that building. I don't think, I don't think a normal person would have started like this, get started and then look for bids for, I think that every, the bids, bids would have been locked in before you opened a wall. And for someone to say about this P, PPCBs, you know, oh, there's more in there than what we thought. Come on. When that building was built, they, they monitor, they document, and, and, and our experts have gone through many schools and should have known. We relied on them, and I would hope, I wish he was sitting here, because I really think you should be putting a lawsuit on these people. You should take your fantastic Mr. Jack Bradley, who I don't think is worth two cents, but get him after those people. And the 15% that we're losing, look at them. They're the ones, and I don't know which one it is, maybe it was both of those people that were sitting here a few minutes ago, who should be on their case. That's why they carry liability insurance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other public comments? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.